What's that? Okay, tonight is, it is four thirty. And we're at Old Town Hall. On November twenty first, four thirty. This is a remote participation Zoom meeting. It's a public meeting being recorded for cable and broadcasting on Zoom.
Patrick McGovern, present.
Joanne Wilson, present.
Paul Tigo, present. For delegates. You're already on the podium, Jim, but you want to read to the town nurses?
That's why I'm here.
Oh, okay, you know.
Yeah, good evening, Boyd. Good evening, Dykens. Welcome. Yeah, the town nurse couldn't be here tonight, and the health agent Heather could not be here tonight. They both have prior obligations. So Heather sent in a report. I'll paraphrase a little bit. She wanted everyone to know that she attended several meetings. One was the Southeast Chapter of Mappin'. And that topic was on holistic nursing care, which I find interesting. It's nice to see that we're looking at our elders, the holistic approach instead of just medical. She attended the MHOA conference, and that was, she emphasized the work that Titans done with opioids. She also attended a Maven webinar on, or like, illnesses. I have to say, I don't know what that is. Do you know?
What, what may bar like illnesses?
No, no.
Unless they're talking about norovirus stuff.
Oh, maybe, maybe, yeah, probably. Immunizations. She held the yearly flu clinic in October, partnered with Vanette, and sixteen Dayton residents were vaccinated. She did some work at the senior center. She offered blood pressure testing at COA Flu Clinic. And she is letting everyone know she has to suspend her monthly blood pressure clinics at the COA Primetime Building. She's also been continuing, continuing to contribute to the COA newsletter. Then she had a couple of additional items. She has one open case Maven that she's working on. And she wanted everyone to know that she changed her employment, and she had to step back from the Public Health Excellent Grant weekly meetings, which are on Tuesdays. I cannot attend those. We're trying to get the health agent to fill in for us so that we at least have some presence at those meetings.
What time is it?
Sorry?
When are they?
Ten AM on Tuesdays.
Are you in person or virtually?
Also, also, also.
I might be able to do.
All right. It's been a little bit difficult with perks and outside inspections, especially in year inspections. Health agent couldn't make today, so we can copy the other links and if you can join in, that would be great.
I might be, I could probably do Tuesdays are my remote days.
Do we, do we have to? Wait, how to do that?
No, no, it's open. Anyone can attend. Anyone who's a member of the Health Department, so.
Okay.
Okay, that's all she has for her report.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Sorry you couldn't be with us tonight.
Did she say it was the blood pressure clinic cancellation? Was that just a, was there an issue with it or?
She didn't give a reading. No, she didn't revise the law, and I didn't elaborate, but just she had to suspend it. Would you like us to email her and find out?
I can reach out to her. I just, I didn't know if something I could help her with.
Okay. It might have something to do with the new job change, so.
I mean, if it's popular, I'd like to try to keep it if we can.
Okay.
But I can email her.
Yeah, let us know. There's anything we can do.
All right, so. That was Heather's, I mean. Falls report. Anything for the animals, Doctor?
I don't have anything. Do you have anything?
Okay. Health agent?
The only thing I can let you know is the health agent obtained her certified pool operator license certification. That's good for five years, I believe. She did very well. She scored very high with that, so proud of her for that. And she's obtained another half a dozen certifications outside of the ones that we would press the dip she got, so. Things are looking up.
And now you.
Yeah. So aside from the agenda items, the only thing I wanted to bring your attention, well, there are a couple of things I want to bring your attention. Unfortunately, the implementation of the software is a little slow going. I was a little concerned at first as to why. And I found out that the company changed servers, and that's a big, if you know what the service offer, cloud-based software system statewide. That's a huge undergo. And I didn't know that. Obviously, it's something that they don't share with their clients for obvious reasons, but so that that's been the delay. So they just got the new service system online, so I'm guessing they'll get back on track. And then we'll get moving on getting this implemented. There are a couple of other things that I wanted to do in preparation for that. Some of them on the agenda tonight, so that's all in our following place, so. Take a little bit longer, but we'll get there. We did, the health agent and I did inspections today on retail food establishments. To our surprise, we found quite a bit of expired goods in the, in the stores. Some of them were very minor, just a few pieces, few items, half a dozen. One of the establishments had seventy-seven expired items on the shelves that we removed. And unfortunately, that store is on our radar for offenses with both tobacco and trash bag sales. So we'll be sending that business a letter stating that following up, we made sure that all stuff was removed, taken off the floor, has to be disposed of. But we're to follow up in writing with this, with this establishment. All of the others were just fairly minor in nature. The other thing we did today was we, with the help of office manager Barrera, we gave each establishment in writing what they owe in trash bags, and we made them sign. We signed and they signed in their presence. We did leave one establishment with a check, so I thought that was good. Hopefully you're clear. So it sounds like, or it seems like we're going to make some headway with getting collections done. And, and one of the things that I was a new vendor, so hopefully that'll bolster up our stance.
Now, we're going back to the vendor. They have the seventy-seven expired items. Are you going to send them a warning? Is there anything in the fee schedule? If the first time you get a warning? Second time, is there a fine?
I think statutorily it's written, so I have to brush up on what the statute says. I've not been involved with any, anything like expired retail goods, so I'll just brush up on it. If there's nothing statutorily, then I'll be back in front of the board to establish the process. But at the very least, this owner needs to know in writing what we found and the severity of what we found.
Right.
Seventy-seven items is unacceptable.
No. All right, now. Discussing, review discussing the overdue trash bag vendors accounts.
Elizabeth, you want to talk about this, or are you?
Yeah, I just had the one from last month. So you can see what the difference is from what they paid from last month. Does anybody have two of these in the packet?
No, I have one.
I wanted one.
So it shows the difference, isn't it? The main vendor that we're not going to get up there and.
No.
The main vendor that is the most delinquent, the past due account, they paid twelve thousand dollars of it. And current is ten thousand dollars less if you include the order they're going to get Friday. You don't include it, and they are about sixteen thousand dollars less than what they owe us. So total, they were fifty-four last month. This month, they're forty-four, but that's with the delivery they haven't even gotten.
Right.
So they're actually at thirty-eight.
Okay.
But they're getting a six thousand dollar delivery Friday. So that adds them up to forty-four. So they went from fifty-four to thirty-eight, technically. So we're going to give them a shipment on Friday, and that's going to bump them up to forty-four, I think, dollars.
So is there a plan in place for the remainder that they owe?
I've submitted all the tickets on their portal to try to get.
The way they suggested you do it, right, yeah?
Suggested. I did that the week we had media, and that was three and a half weeks ago, and I haven't looked.
And how long did they tell you to figure you'd hear something?
They didn't. They just said, here's your ticket number. We'll look into it and get back to you.
Have you followed up since then?
Send me one check from November of twenty twenty-two. So that was good, that at least recognizing that there's some invoices from twenty twenty-two that weren't paid.
So they are working on.
They are.
They are working. If we're doing, if we're following the process, they are catching up with what they owe.
I will say, though, I haven't had a payment since November sixth. And then I got a small one yesterday. It was.
Now, when they send a small one, are they sending it like, for example, like eight twenty-two, says eight hundred twenty-two fifty? Are they sending like that with that payment, or are they sending like just a random ten thousand dollar check?
No, they just sent a small payment.
Okay, but it matches up with like a bill that's owed, so we're solely crossing off the caught up invoice.
They sent us paid off the October twentieth and October thirteenth orders.
From twenty?
Twenty-three. So they're only paying the current one.
Oh, so then none of these checks that you've been getting are?
Are for past due.
Oh, man. Anywhere?
Except for one.
Except for one.
They received one, and to me, that's, that's great because they recognize they have older bills.
Right.
We got one from November of twenty twenty-two.
My, my speculation is the older bills, that was before the change in ownership.
Right.
It's going to take more time for them to quantify things on their end.
I mean, when you look at this, it's, it's all seems to be the overlapping in ownership and the transition. I mean, technically, I mean, if you take, take away that whole scenario of them being bought out and merging and whatever, they're, or not even thirty days past due.
Right.
I mean, so, I mean, it's progress, and it's not bad when you look at it, and, you know, I mean, in twenty-two, we had a lot of changes too, so it's, I mean, it's, it's tough on both sides of this aspect, but if you're getting a payment from November, and we really only talked about pushing this a month ago, at, at least they're, they're, I think they're making progress.
Yeah, it went from thirty-nine to twenty-seven past due. So they paid some of it.
Yeah, but the other thing also, I don't know if you're aware. Joanne. A few hours ago, there was a post on Facebook that somebody went to Hanifert, and they said that we have a shortage of bags. They didn't order bags last week, so they didn't get a delivery. And we, I posted on there as available places that can get them, and that they will be getting a delivery on Friday. But I don't think it's right that if there's not being that, that quick on getting back, and they owe us the money, don't lie and tell your people that it's because they don't, they have a shortage. We just got a whole year's supply.
Right? Yeah, that's human nature is to blame someone else, though. I'm not saying it's right. It's certainly not right.
No.
It's easier to blame, it's always easy to blame the government too, by the way.
Right, right. Also, it's, it's social media, so what was actually said to them versus what was posted? I mean, I'm not saying people are liars.
No, I don't, but.
Stories go.
I've had a lot of people come in today, and their main thing is they can't use their debit card anywhere else.
And the complaint is, I mean, the complaint is going to be, you're asking a cashier for bags, and the cashier, who's a high school kid, is going to say, we're out of them.
Yeah.
You know, or we don't have them, or we didn't get an order. I mean, it's, did they talk to the manager, or did they talk to?
They normally call for an order every week, but last week was a short week. We were only yet two days.
Right, right.
So they did call Monday morning first, they placed an order. So. I think with the new vendor agreement, it, it opens the door for us to say, hey, listen, can we have everything paid in full, and then we'll start this new agreement?
Right.
And move forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's an issue on our end too, is the vendor agreement. We need, we need some sort of documented recourse that they've agreed to.
Yeah, we can't hold them accountable to the whole agreement.
Right.
And we should think about, we don't have a big decision now. Should it be thirty days, or should it, we, with most of them? Should, should it be?
Keep this in mind if needed.
When, when they, when they get an order, they sell it, and then when they get the second order, they pay for the order they had before. And somebody like Hanifert, they're ordering quite a large volume, so they're ordering every week, where a lot of them. Does any of the other vendors order every week?
I think with Hanifert's, it's not, they're not in control of the finances, so they have to send the invoice to headquarters. Headquarters has to process it, so I think it's hard for them to turn around and check it somewhere that big of a.
Right, the store manager at Hanifert's can just cut a check now.
Yeah, I have a couple of ideas. I'm hoping when we get to the agreement, we can really have a good discussion about it, because I have a couple of ideas, and I'm hoping to leave here. We're all hoping to leave here with a good agreement that we think we can put into place, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think our agreement should have something along those lines, like, you know, there's an X amount of time for a payment plan and, and whatever, however it works.
What I have before you is a draft, so we, we hope to have a good dialogue tonight about it, so. And then the other thing too is, you know, we, we've never visited sites like we did today and said, by the way, you know, you owe us money, and here it is in black and white, and we did leave with a check, so I think if we're, if we're just more engaged with the, with the vendors, I think that'll also help too.
What happened with the other vendors that you asked, where you didn't get a check, Rob?
They assured us that we would get a payment. So, yeah, and, and the absence of anything in writing, that's, I had to say, okay, send us a check. Or use the Dropbox out front. You can leave it at any time.
Yeah.
For the most part, I mean, everybody on here minus the bigger one and one of the other small ones, they're, they're well under thirty days past due, so.
We did get a payment today from the first one, that small amount that he owes. He paid that off.
Oh, okay.
But I haven't deposited a check yet, so.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's not. And take, take away that twenty-seven thousand, and that's really not a bad cheat.
No.
Which one did you say?
Guy on the left. First vendor on the list.
Dave's?
Yeah, he paid the.
Yeah, but he didn't pay the whole thing, right?
Paid four hundred ninety today, and he said he would drop off another check on Friday of this week, which I totally put in Dropbox.
Okay.
The shelves is coming in, which I was surprised they were getting past due because they're usually on point. So it's kind of gas. I was kind of surprised that they. But they're ordering more because they're needing more, so it's like.
Well, they're going to Hanifert and running out. They, they, they're getting more business with other, with local businesses. All right, we.
Another public service announcement, trash bags.
What's that?
I have an announcement on the trash bags.
Okay.
So we have our new trash bags that have hit the streets with our new vendor. Everything seems to be fairly positive. We did have one complaint that we verified today that the small trash bags, sometimes they're a little difficult to open. I mean, it's not that they're sealed or they're manufactured improperly. I think just the way that the two plastics have went through the machinery together, it makes them difficult to separate. So we had a little contest in the office. Patrick won. He opened it in thirteen seconds flat. The rest of us couldn't open it too quickly, so everyone at home, we're sorry. There's nothing wrong with the bags, but they do take a little bit of work to get them open. Secrets, Patrick?
I licked my fingers.
Okay.
That's how I, that's how I always do it.
I had to use hands in a task, but even then, it took me a minute to get it apart. I cheated and used Scotch tape.
I cheated? You was in hand lotion, start cheating.
So maybe at home, you can just wet your fingers under the faucet or something, and.
I'm sure if you took like your hand, I didn't even think about doing something like this.
The hand thing, yeah. But the good thing is the double, this double seam at the bottom seems to be bulletproof. Hopefully it stays that way. I know it's early, but if anyone thinks it's easy to try and get these things manufactured and have them perfect, it's not.
No, I know. We also did get some complaints about the rolls not being complete.
We had one complaint, I think it was one.
Two.
Two complaints. It was nine in the roll, and one said there was eight in the roll.
Yeah. I haven't seen that yet.
Yeah, and somebody came in today, and we counted the roll. It was ten, and so, I don't know. I don't know, some people might be buying that rolls of trash bags and just pulling one at a time and not really even counting, keeping track, so they.
I'm not sure how you verify that. I mean, unless you unroll the whole thing and count them all and fold them, put them in the drawer, I don't know. And I'm not saying anyone didn't get the full amount, but I just don't know how you would verify that.
Right.
Unless you unrolled it as soon as you got it.
I would, I would never even think to count. I mean, good for the people that did.
Right.
I mean, let's get the company aware that they were shorting a bag and get them a replacement roll, but I, I would never think to, I just buy them when my wife tells me to.
Right, and that's what I think most people do. They just buy them and just keep pulling them out when they get low.
Right.
I think probably we should just wait to see.
Yeah, we'll monitor it.
If we get more complaints.
I think the service or the relationship we have with our new vendor, I think if there is a problem, then they'll make good on it. I don't see a concern. Okay, thank you.
All right, now, if we go to the agreement.
Yeah, so. New packet. Office manager gave me insisting one. Give the pump store, and then it's actually one of the draft. And one of the biggest things that I did, what felt was, was in order, was to actually take the price out of the agreement. And that price should not be memorialized in the agreement, because it can fluctuate. So I did that purposely. I, I did put nomenclature in here, or language in here that would say, that says that the board would establish the price. I did say that the board would establish the price every October if it saw a fit, because that coincided with the bag order that we do. So if there's a change in bag prices on our end, then we can establish a new price to pass on any increases to the consumer. I think everyone remembers that I want to get away from the end of this year purchase, so that we stagger, more staggered. The October date is something that we can talk about if you don't think it works, but I think it's a good starting point. The other thing I did is I put something in there that said that the board could change the price at any time, and that if the board changed the price, then the vendors would be notified in writing by us, and I think the best that we did today by visiting them all would be the way that we would notify them that there's a price change. So, so those are a couple of highlights that I had.
I have one question. Elizabeth, do you know when we deliver the trash bags to the vendors, do they sign for them? But we do have signed copies that they be.
Packet that has a carbon copy in its box. And he puts thunder, and then he gets copied.
Is there any language of that in here, Jim?
I'm sorry?
Of, of the receipt?
No, there isn't. There can be if you'd like.
I, I don't think it would hurt to add it. We're already doing it. Maybe it's not necessary to add it.
Yeah, I'm not sure it is. I think that's more of like an operating procedure. I don't know that that needs to be memorialized in agreement, unless you want there to be a signature every time we make a delivery, then yeah, maybe you have it in the agreement.
Yeah.
There is a signature, so maybe it should be a name as well, because sometimes a signature is coming, it's just like.
Instead of them having to write out, you know, carbon copy, you print out, you know, the customer name, how many bags are they going to get? And then two copies with them, so.
They do, and then they put a carbon copy in between, so when they sign it, it presses through both papers.
Oh, I thought they had to fill out anything.
No.
Okay.
No, they should be named, just for their name on there, because I can't tell who signed it.
So can we just put a printed line, signature?
Yeah. Okay. Any questions, Joanne?
I don't know.
Patrick? Elizabeth?
I don't know, it's my name. The fee then for the trash bags, would that be listed in our fee schedule, so it's listed somewhere?
It would be established by the board, yes. Right now, just a quick update, Solid Waste Committee, you attended the last meeting, has chosen not to change the bag price, or at least not make a recommendation to change the bag price until next year, meaning February, March of next year. I'm not sure I agree with that, but that seems to be the consensus of committee, so. The board can change the price at the time. It's up to you to set the price. But the Solid Waste Committee has a vested interest in, in the oversight of that program, so that's why they looked for, for their input.
Yeah.
Where do we stand financially with the cost of the trash pickup versus the bag? I know that was a big concern.
Or deficit. So the tax, the taxpayer are, are offsetting the costs based on the, the lack of revenues. Well, well, right now, that program is not sustainable. Even with a bag increase, it's not sustainable because there's no revenue for recyclables. So I think some of the reluctance, see, if I solid waste is we're just changing the bag price, what other option do we have for increasing revenues to make? So it's a sustainable service. And right now, there, there are ways, but there's a lot of discussion that needs to take place before we come up with a solution. Well, that's not in here, and I, I didn't want to have a more detailed discussion about it, is right now, it says that number three, you can sign these reads to sell said merchandise to such persons as wish to purchase the same and to collect for, in behalf of the town, the amounts due for said merchandise, and to pay the town monthly the total sum of the amount so collected. So what this says is that they're not responsible to pay us for the order if the order left, is left unsold, only what they collected or sold.
Right.
So I think that's a fair assessment. The only thing that I was thinking was, and this goes along the lines of the discussion we just started to have, is I would like to see them pay every time we make a delivery, because if you're receiving a delivery, I mean, you sold bags. So I would like, when a delivery person from the town goes to the site, that they leave with a check. Now, there's a couple of, of instances where that can happen. The lottery tail is a one of them, because they don't, they can't cut checks on site. So what I thought might be a solution is to have a COD clause in here, but have a credit option that's also available. And the, the, the company would have to apply credit application, just like anyone else would. And then the board would authorize them to be on credit, means they don't have to pay us when we deliver. But that means we would have done our diligence to make sure they have credit worthiness, and then have made some kind of terms in that credit application where we can go after them for the funds. So I don't want to overcomplicate it, but if we're going to do this, I'm thinking we might want to do it, you know, once and for all.
Well, right, I would be interested to see how, what the town would have to do to run a credit report or hire, do we have a system in place for something?
I think Paul Reynolds could help us with that.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't asked. I didn't want to get ahead of myself until I talked to the board. But yeah, we would have to flush that out. That's a good point.
I mean, I'd be okay with like a, you know, you, you can't be more than thirty days delinquent or past due.
Right.
Before receiving a new order kind of thing.
Right.
Maybe not like dropping off. Now, do we, if the highway department drops off the bag, do they take checks then, or is it, is it part of their job code, or?
No, they, yes, they.
Okay, so nor, would normally would they take a check and bring it to us, or?
Yes, but it's not all the time, and I, I'd like to see a system where if we're making a delivery, we leave there with a check. And, and the other, the other reason why the credit application may be appropriate is if we have a vendor who is a little lax in paying, well, then they're not on credit. They're on COD, and if we don't have a check, we don't leave the bags. It's that simple.
Right. I want to go two things. Elizabeth, what did you just say about complaints about not being able to use debit cards?
That was the one thing that they enjoyed going to Hanifert's for us, because they could use their debit card.
And nobody else is allowing that?
No, the only one.
It costs three percent if you use your debit card at any gas station, and essentially, the vendor is losing money by letting you use your debit card.
Well, they're making what, four cents per bag?
Right now, with the current fee structure, they're making four cents a bag.
So it's forty cents per roll. And what's four percent of ten dollars? About twenty dollars, four percent. Use my calculator.
Fifty cents.
Eighty. Yeah. Yeah, for a twenty-dollar value. It's a fall off.
And I don't think we can set standards to allow them to use credit cards or debit cards.
No, I don't think so either. That. Maybe we need further discussion, but speaking of, why don't we, I'm saying, why don't we, we'll discuss it. What if we take debit cards or credit cards?
We are working on that. I talked to Paul Reynolds. He's implementing it in the tax collector's office first.
Yeah.
And then once he gets it up and running. And then once he gets it up and running, I ask him to pay it to us.
So technically, when, uh, vendor. Orders a new bag, new order bags. They could submit an email and authorize to use their credit card or debit card. And then, oh, we could get that, I mean, I would pay.
Um, I I suppose I I we'd have to talk to the treasurer about that, but I I do, I do want everyone to know, because I do take credit card payments, E F Ts. To be exact, which is electronic fund transfers for my building permits.
Yeah.
A municipality is the only entity that can pass through the cost to the consumer. So we don't, if if my permit fee is seventy five dollars, we collect seventy five dollars. We don't collect a penny less. The fee that's that's charged by the credit card company to process that is additional to the seventy five. The, uh, a municipality is the only entity that legally has the right to do that.
Right.
Where can change the price of their their thing, but they can't upcharge to swipe a credit card.
No, they can discount.
Right.
Using cash.
Right, exactly. Yes.
And, uh.
That, I mean, that might be able to be built out through your permit structure or something like that, or through the electronic thing, you might be able to log online and just. Pay for trash bags or buy trash bags online through the town.
Yeah, I I, you know, I, um, it's interesting discussion to have. I mean, we'd have to set them up as a vendor, so I I'd have to have that discussion with Mr. Reynolds, but. I'm sure it can be done.
A lot of like those, like those E F P things, if you pay online for a town site or a state site. If you use your checking book or you use your checkbook and a routing number, they don't charge you the fee. If you use a credit card. I don't think debit cards charge, I think it's only credit cards.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but.
But I mean, we could talk to Paul, it'd definitely be something to explore, so.
And right now, Elizabeth, if somebody comes into, uh. Buy bags from us. They have to use cash?
On check.
On check. So we, so we're the same way, we're not allowed.
Yeah.
debit card yet.
I certainly don't help people as much as you do, but I've only seen one person could not buy the bags, they had to go back, go out and get cash and come back.
One of them came in today and. He has, he has an ATM right down the street, he's like, it's not an ATM, I'm like.
Yeah. Uh, there's no doubt if there was a a machine on the counter, probably everyone would use it.
Oh, yeah, it's definitely something to look into when Paul gets that thing set up. I mean, maybe, maybe it'll work.
Now, in the agreement here, does it say that we set the bag price, so they can't be upcharging?
Yeah, it it's, it's, what a helpful set of price. So.
Number seven, it it mentions that the agreement shall continue for a term of years. Is that just, are we just leaving that open ended, or are we gonna have them re-sign another contract later on?
It's up to you. The the way this was written was it was an ongoing document, only to be changed when the board changed it.
And what happens if one of these places changes hands?
That's a good question.
So I. Uh, I think maybe after a certain amount of time, they should be readdressed at a new contract. Maybe.
Uh, I agree. But. If we only go on a time limit. We don't know when that place might have changed hands. We could make it that when a place changes hands, they sign a new contract.
Well, we would, if a store changes hands, we would have to know for. For the health licenses, they would have to notify us anyways, so Jim would be notified anyways. So we couldn't add a line in there that says, you know, this contract will be readdressed if, you know, corporation changes, business changes hands or something like that. Just say it will be read, because we'll know anyways.
Yeah.
So. Um, but it is good if, I mean, if it changes hands, that it should be readdressed to be held the new new owner. Liable, so if we could add something in there, Jim, to say, to address the. You know, changing of hands, new contract could be signed under. Or even just, you know, even if we put a line in there that said a new contract may be required at the board of health's discretion. You know, and.
Okay.
However you want to word it.
Yeah, I'll email it all to you to to look at. Yep.
Thank you.
So do we want to make a decision on this tonight, uh?
Uh, the only other thing I wanted to to clarify, even though the Solid Waste Committee doesn't want to make a reputation of bag price changes. Now, the current agreement that we have is we sell the bags to our vendors at discounted rate, slightly discounted rate.
Right.
Um, the way I wrote this, that is not an option. It's going to be face value is what they're gonna, they're gonna have to pay for. So there's no, there's no room to make money, right? So that's one of the discussions I want to have with the three of you tonight, is how do you want that to be structured? If you want it to be structured that they can make a little, then we have to write in here that they'll be sold to them at a discounted rate.
What do you have to think about?
I don't know, I mean, I'm fifty fifty, it's trash bags. I mean, if I'm going to a gas station to get trash bags and getting gas, or if I'm getting, you know, if I'm going to a, uh. Corner store to get trash bags, I'm getting. Milk or something, so.
I I feel the same way, and if they're only gonna be making a little bit, what's the difference in a little bit and nothing?
Exactly.
What what's your thought?
Is that gonna help the deficit?
Minuscule.
Is it gonna sustain the program?
No, no.
Yeah.
No, it's minuscule amount of money. Um. Honestly, um, I'm being slightly selfish in that from an accounting perspective, it cleans things up significantly on our on our end. And it removes any confusion, but if you feel, I'm certainly, this isn't about us. Certainly, if you feel the discount helps the the the, uh, vendor and the and the business owner, then we can leave it in place.
Well, my opinion is that. If we're fronting them the bags anyways. So it's not like we're asking them to pay for something that they're gonna sell and not make any money. It's giving them the option to offer. And. To get people in the door. So they might not be, uh. Making a dime out of it, but they're not putting the money up front.
Well, the other thing too is, and I don't want to get too deep into, uh, marketing strategies, but there are lots of. Places that sell things below cost.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
So if 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 that many people are saying, you know, Hannaford's is out of trash bags, that means they're moving a lot of trash bags. Um, now, they're not going in there just for trash bags. But trash bags may be the reason, ah, gotta run to Hannaford's, and they leave with a carriage full.
Right.
So if we're, if we raise the prices of the bags for the consumer. Are we raising that margin for the retailer as well, or are we gonna allow them to make more money when we raise the price for the consumer?
So that's a great question, and I remember our discussion with Solid Waste, we have to wait to hear back from D E P, Missy Hollenback, on whether or not that's allowed, because. Um, trash pickup is considered a utility, a service. And you're not allowed to profit off it, because that was actually my idea, was try to be more capitalistic. It seems that that's not gonna be allowed. So I guess the question is, is, um, do we feel that we set the price and that's the price? Whether you come into the board of health to buy a bag, or you go into Hannaford's, that's the price. And Hannaford's pays that same price, meaning if someone uses a credit card, they're selling at a three percent loss.
Right.
Um, or do you want to continue to have the slight discount so that the retailer can make up that cost for the card swiping?
Or do we want to? Give them that slight discount so that. They can allow their customers to use a debit card. Without without it costing them money.
Basically, yeah, basically what we're saying.
Yeah. Give them four percent. Discount on the on the retail price.
Uh, I I have mixed feelings about it, I I. I own a business, so I would think that if. I'm looking at trash bags not as a money maker, but as a commodity to get you in my store. I would have no problem selling at a two or three percent discount, because you're allowing me to take the bags on credit.
Right.
Not paying you for them.
Right.
I'm only giving you the money of bags sold, basically, it's just a pass through. So, um. Does that warrant a discount because they're they're running it through their books? Uh, I'm looking for guidance, I don't really have an opinion either way, you know?
I mean, I I hate to say it, some stores that are are cash, if they're doing it. Are probably just taking the cash, putting it in an envelope, and it probably never runs through their books. I mean, because they're just giving the cash to us.
That's another good.
So it's, I mean, it's.
Well, if they give us a check.
But I don't want to get into that.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's very possible.
So I, honestly, I I don't care either way, it's it's. Four cents on the bag, it's not a crazy difference.
Right.
I mean, for accounting purposes, it it's easier to deal with whole numbers, um. You know, and when you look at smaller stores, they're making four cents on the bag, but when you're talking about a bigger corporation that's selling pallets worth, they're making. Forty dollars a bag, not a bag, but because there's their volume is out the doors more.
Not the vendors, I mean, we want, we don't want to make this so the consumer doesn't have access to bags, obviously, that's not my intent. But a vendor does have the ability to either say I want to sell them or not sell.
Right.
It's entirely up to them. And based on what I'm hearing from public feedback, not many people know that they can buy them in other places.
Yeah. Well, that's why I corrected that post today, of the list of where everybody can get them.
And I don't think the four cents a bag is is why the vendors are selling. They're not selling it for the four cents a pound for the bag, they're selling it for the. To your point, like if I go into the store and I buy a roll of bags, I'm walking out with three or four things. If I go to Hannaford's to buy bags, I'm walking out with a two hundred dollar carriage full of things, you know, like it's.
Right, and we have small places like under the sun. That, you know, they're a. Not like a variety store, they don't have the traffic, but yet they want to sell them because it's a reason for.
Because people are, so I mean, I, I don't know, I'm I'm either, I I'd go off your recommendation, I I don't care either way. I mean, if we need to make a vote on it, we can make a vote on it.
Yeah. I think, I think after reading number two again, um. Wait for my desk. I think I'll probably put a line in there that specifies that upselling is prohibited.
Yes.
Because, yeah, I, right now, the way you read it, you know, I don't want to leave anything to chance. So I I think I'll put a, I'll put a line in there about that upselling of bag. Upselling bags beyond the price set by the board of health is prohibited.
I'd say they're not allowed to go up.
And would be considered breach of contract.
Yeah.
Now.
Did you get that? Sometimes I can't.
I think that's a good point.
Now, how how about this? Can we make them? Put. Visible sign, just like the permits have to be hung, saying, we have trash bags for six miles of dollars. Sign agreement with us and make that visible, the customers come in. So if a customer's in, then no question. Why are you trying to have me eleven, twelve dollars for a roll and signs as ten?
I think if they were profiting off it, then I think we'd have the ability to do that, but I, they're not profiting off it, so I don't think we dictate. How they display or what them. I think, I think what we need to do as a health department is go out, do some checks of the vendors, make sure they're not upselling. Make sure the people know to call us if there's any upselling going on and just just manage the program.
I I think adding that line in in that number two would would be a good.
Yeah.
A good thing to do.
After reading it.
Because then if they do, then you have a breach of contract, then we can shut them off, so, yeah. So we can readdress this? Do you want to send it out to us, or do you want to? Bring it to another meeting? The changes?
The postholder, do we want to vote on it tonight with the agreement of the changes?
Yeah, you can vote on it with the changes that we discussed, I'll clean it up, I'll send it to you if.
Yes.
If you agree, then we'll make it live.
Okay.
Honestly, I mean, if we can, the faster we can get it out, because it lines up with these permits, it's the end of the year, it's not a bad time to get it.
I think that's good.
Right, the other thing in full disclosure is we're going into December, we all know it's holiday month, and. I'm away most of January, so.
Who authorized that?
You don't remember?
It wasn't me. Uh. So can we get a motion that? We can.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to agree or to. Agree to this new agreement that was drafted up with the changes that were discussed tonight to be sent out to us and.
Review.
Proofread.
A second.
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, now. On with the fees.
Oh, one, can I ask one more question about this?
Sure.
Um, is this gonna go to legal before? It gets put into, okay. Thank you.
Now, who who's? Don't we have to go to Mike Mullins to hear if he's going to legal?
Yeah, but not for a contract, uh, we don't, we don't need permission.
We don't have to have anybody review it or anything?
Oh, no, we do.
Oh, okay.
I don't need. I don't need a vote in the selectmen to have that looked at.
We just take our word of turn into?
I will, no, no, we use town council.
Okay.
We use town. But if you're asking, will will I need town administrator's permission? I will let him know that we're doing that, but and we'll get the bill.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, it won't delay things.
Okay. All right, so now on to the fee schedule updates.
Okay, so what you have before you, it's our current fee schedule with my. Mine is a crazy thing, you don't want to get into it sometimes, but. What I did on the first one is I. I went through it, crossed off things that I thought were duplicate. Just said it a different way. Um, and then it's such sort of ideal, no, so to speak, and then I didn't really use the cleaned up version. That Officer Manager Flareira put together. Um, both of them are in there for context, so you can see what it was, it's sort of follow along and see what I did. Um. My my intent was to simplify this into. Um, a one or two page schedule, it it cannot be less than two pages. A third page if you include stormwater and animal control, and I'll get to that in a second, okay? So our our. We took a three page, I think, or four page. And leveled it down to two. With an additional supplemental page of stormwater and animal control. And how I did that was. A lot of the stuff like seasonal food permit, farmers' markets, et cetera, et cetera. I just pulled those all into food service establishments, they're all food service establishments. Um. We still had a temporary food permit, which is slightly less than a full year. Um, but I took out some of the clauses about how many months you're allowed to operate, things like that, I'll leave that up to the health agent if they think it's a full or a temporary. And then she can make that determine.
But wouldn't that be the person that's gonna buy the permit, say, I I'm, I know I'm only gonna do one day, so I only want a one day permit? Or I plan on doing it quite a few times, so.
We don't have a one day anymore, that's temporary.
Okay.
Yeah, we got rid of it.
Well, but isn't temporary the same?
Temporary, temporary, as defined by the statute, is, uh, less than one year. Um, typically around six months of operation. So if you have a summer food vendor, then that would be a temporary.
Now, what if we have people from the town, they only come for one day?
Yep, I'm I'm saying it's it's it should be a temporary one, one day is no longer there, it's temporary, seventy five dollars.
Right, that's what I thought you were saying, that we don't have that.
We don't, I got rid of the term one day and and. Sort of. Um, merged it with temporary food permit.
And temporary means one day?
It can be one day, but it can also mean up to six months.
But how is that determined?
By the health agent.
Now, is the fee the same?
No. The full time, the full annual is a hundred twenty five dollars and the temporary seventy five.
Okay. I'm I'm, I'm not following along.
I understand.
Uh. A vendor comes in, they have an option. I want to buy a temporary. Or one day. We don't call that, oh, oh, for a year. It's their decision to decide which permit they want to buy.
Correct, but if an establishment says they want a temporary. And they explain the operations to the health agent, and and the health agent says, no, you need an annual, then they're gonna get an annual.
Right.
Because the annual includes two inspections, the temporary includes one. And that's why it's structured this way. It costs seventy five dollars for the department to process a permit and inspect, one field inspection.
Yeah.
And all the signatures and everything, that that's all been verified through my department, that's how I set my my baseline. The additional cost of one twenty five for an annual is the additional site inspection, because an annual requires two inspections a year. So that's why it's fifty dollars more to cover the cost of the additional site visit. But the one day in our previous form.
I think it was seventy for the first day? And seventy each day after?
Yeah.
Expected to seventy.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Just recently, yeah.
Yeah, just recently, we did, we did that, but if you think about the context of that, right? So if you have a three day event, you're talking about being more costly than.
A yearly annual permit, that's just insanity.
So then the then the consumer would just say, okay, I want a one year permit.
Right, I'm not giving them the option with this fee schedule. I don't, well, I I think the one day license is just too complicated. You can disagree and we can talk about it, but I just, I don't see the need for it.
For the most part, temporary food permits come in for food trucks, we also have a food truck. Permit. Or that one gets taken out.
No, it's taken out, food truck is in there, right?
Yeah, so the vendor has the option, if it's a food truck, they can get a food truck permit, and that'll cover them all year.
Right.
Now, what are they? Who would get a permit if they don't have a food truck?
Um, your cow trip.
Flying fire.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, th- there's lots of them.
Yeah, okay, chicken barbecue, there's a root instead.
Right.
Uh. I'm 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 still. I think it should be the option to the person that we say, listen, for seventy five dollars, you get a one day permit. And for a hundred and twenty five, you get a one year permit. Which one do you want?
But but the problem with the one day, I'm sorry, I wanted to, uh, how with the one day is it's very rare that you have a one day food vendor. It happens. Yeah, I'm not gonna deny it. But.
So now everybody's gonna be buying the one year one.
But the structure that we had before, well, so what?
Yeah.
So if they buy the, if they buy the one year, so what? They get a couple of inspections a year.
Right.
Are you are you are you are you thinking that 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 is gonna actually run as a deficit?
No, what I'm thinking is that we shouldn't dictate to them which one they have to buy. That they have to make their own decision. If I'm coming to an event and it's a three day event. And I get three one day permits, that's gonna cost me two hundred and twenty five dollars and I get a one year permit for a hundred and twenty five. Can I get the one year one, please?
Misunderstand. I think the three day event would still fall under the temporary food permit. Whether it's one day or up to six months, it would be a temporary.
Exactly right.
So they pay for it three times versus.
Then they wouldn't. Yeah, they would only wanna pay once that seventy five instead of three days of it.
It's it's.
I I I don't, and maybe it's just me not getting it, but. So for seventy five dollars, I can buy a permit that'll cover me up to six months.
Gets you one inspection, just like a one day event would get you one inspection.
And then I can do events for six months long and not pay more than seventy five dollars.
Right. Unless there's a violation. If there's a violation, then you're required to pay an additional inspection fee. And that's quantified through the health agent's inspection. So if you have a violation, you're ready for a violation, then you automatically have to pay another another fee, a fifty dollar fee. I believe it's fifty dollars.
The old, the fee structure was.
Right.
It wasn't like seventy five dollars a day. It was seventy five plus ten for each additional day or something like that.
It was very convoluted the way.
But it's like thirty five for the the permit and then like ten dollars per day, so.
So if you're thinking that a vendor would need to be inspected each time they 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 serve the public. Um, that's not the case. A food truck is not inspected every single time they set up shop and serve the public. They're inspected. In this particular case, a food truck is twice a year. That's why it's a hundred twenty five dollars. It's mostly initial inspection and then the health day, it's another time during the year at one of their events to do a pop up inspection.
Right, so. If somebody brings a food truck to the cow chip festival. And then next month brings it to the A school. Then brings it up to the A school, applying it to Arujos. How much does that permit cost?
Hundred twenty five dollars. But it doesn't have to be inspected every time.
Right. Now, what's a seventy five dollar permit gonna get you? Up to six months.
Right.
But not for a food truck. It's wait, the food truck is a hundred and twenty five.
Twenty five, right. The temporary permit is uh for a vendor such as, I don't know.
Wedding or.
Sorry?
A wedding.
Yeah.
Bar, yeah.
Yeah.
Barbecue or chicken barbecue, something like that, you know, most of the time those are one offs.
Most of the time those are.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. That's why I was getting confused. I was thinking more of the food trucks.
Yeah, no, food truck is a hundred twenty five dollars, because you're not telling me food trucks come in one event. It's not gonna happen.
No, no, they don't. In in big cities, food trucks aren't inspected when they they open up shop every day. They're only inspected once or twice a year.
That's why I automatically plug food truck into the one twenty five number, because I know they're gonna have at least two inspections a year, because that's Charlie were. Required to inspect a food establishment twice a year.
Cause I thought that right now. Every time they go to a different place, they get an inspection.
No, not not necessarily. No.
Now, what about?
Health agent has the ability to do that if she feels that she has a problem vendor.
Right.
And and then if there's a violation, they have a fifty dollar fine, so it pays for that inspection. But we're, you know, at least at least not from what I've seen, the health agents out there, she she knows who's. Everybody pretty much does the right thing.
Right.
But if someone comes into town and they're they're a problem, she'll be out there. So they're they're they won't be paying seventy five dollars. It'll be seventy five plus fifty every time she goes and finds a violation.
Right.
And hopefully they'll correct it.
So the. Temporary permit would be for somebody like a Rujos.
Yeah.
Having a chicken barbecue.
Yeah.
How many chicken barbecues can they have?
If if they wanted to have several chicken barbecues throughout the course of the summer, summer only. Yeah, make as many as they want it for seventy five.
Are they gonna get inspected every time?
No. Unless the health agency sees the the necess- the need to do that. And look. This is this is what my recommendation are. If the board feels that it it needs to be tweaked, tweak it. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, the the other question I have is. When do they expire? Is it one year from when they get their permit?
Um. So the right now that the annual permit's by calendar year, correct?
Yes.
And a temporary food permit is typically the summer season. I haven't really established that. Um. But I think everyone thinks summer is May through.
You said it's six months. The temporary food permits for six months.
Right.
So it's six months from the day they pull the.
Yeah, true enough.
They, if they pull it in April, it's good through October. If they pull it in May, it's.
So would the same happen with uh year permit that it's good for one year?
Right, right now, they're they're e- every calendar year. So if you take it out in January, it's a hundred twenty five. You take it out in March, it's a hundred twenty five, because it runs calendar year.
Yeah, and if you take it out in November. Then come January first, you get paid a hundred twenty five.
Yes.
I mean, most things are prorated, you know.
That's entirely up to the board. I'm telling you, though, that seventy five dollars is the cost to take an application and process an application. Do the background and go out and do one field visit. That's what it costs. Slightly less than that, because I try to run my office in the green.
Right.
So that's the number.
What's your opinion on that?
Do we, any comparison to other towns?
We're pretty much in line. I I gotta be honest with you. When I did the comparison, the towns are all over the place. I really can't find any.
Yeah, when I did that one that I sent you, it was weird, because.
Yeah.
You would see like five hundred for one thing for one town and a hundred or thirty five for another town.
Right.
Um, I I I'm fine with it. I mean. It's the cost of doing business when it comes to a food truck. If a food truck wants to come in in November and and work for two months in the cold, then. They'll pay you a hundred and twenty five dollars again in January if they wanna come. I mean, statistically, they're gonna come from. They know their seasons. They know their events well ahead of time. Trust, food trucks are booked now through twenty twenty five, probably. I mean, they know very well what their their summers are, what their seasons are like. If a food truck is pulling a permit in Titan in November, they they know something that we don't. Um, but.
Oh, oh, you're right. And and that kinda coincides with just about any permit that we have, right?
Right.
There's all these permits uh that we issue per year.
I mean, we tried to get a a food truck to come to my son's birthday party last June and we reached out to them three months in advance and they were like, we don't have anything. For this whole year. So they're, I mean, they're very well booked up beyond the summers, so. They know what their seasons are like. They know, you know, it's the same as a. You know, I I would assume it's the same as the septic guy getting a a permit to do septic's in Titan. That whether they're gonna do permits or not, they know the towns they work in. They know they're submitting their permits. In January, because there may be a possibility of them doing something in that town. Are you right. If it's a last minute permit, then they pay the hundred and twenty five and they move on.
You're right, and 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 they might do one uh. Install a year, they might do twenty.
Right. And a food truck, one food truck festival, they're gonna make that hundred and twenty five back.
Oh, yeah.
So they'll get notification through that permit program that you're implementing to when their permits are timed to be renewed, correct? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and um once, once the uh inspection processes is in that, we'll. They'll email the inspection report right at the site. So if there's a violation, it'll go with an inspection fee. They'll be required to pay an inspection fee. They can just pay it with their credit card.
Right.
You know, so, yeah, it's really gonna help out.
No, we said they're gonna. They're gonna be able to pay their inspection fee with a credit card?
Yep, through my permit link software, yeah.
I know, we just had a discussion on paper bags with credit cards.
Right, there's a difference between using an online portal. With my permitting software and the permitting company that charges credit cards. And being a retail vendor and taking credit cards at the counter, the two different things.
Yeah.
So that's why I think that system through the treasurer is perfect, because it's just a diff- it's just a different. It's just a different uh.
Right. Cause you guys, you guys don't handle the money through the permit link, like handles it and write you a check.
Right.
Was that how that works?
Yeah, permit link does all that. They are the POS for the.
Right.
The EFTs or whatever, they're they're the, they're the company that holds all the contracts with the credit card companies.
Right.
Oh, Jim doesn't hold those. He just gave right in the check.
A deposit or accounts two days later.
Oh, okay.
Base value.
Yeah.
Discount. Right. So basically, if you look at this, um, anything in a hundred twenty five or higher, there's at least two inspections a year. Um, some of the, some of them that are higher, like body establishment, there's more paperwork involved. There's a little bit more um. Um, medical paperwork diligence that needs to be done, so that's why they're higher.
Which ones are?
Uh, body establishment. Got two piles.
Body stock shop.
It's two hundred.
Body out.
Yep.
Okay.
The. New construction and repair per testing uh went up. The permits to install are also going up and that coincides with the. Um. Permanent uh plan review, rather, from our plan reviewer, uh Mr. Bernard. And right now, we're breaking even or losing money, but when we factor in our site visits and everything else, so I at least just wanna cover the cost, so that's why those are going up. Um, on shared commercial systems, I I'm putting uh to be determined. Uh, and large systems, simply because those are going to be um. They're not fifty three G. Fifty three is a term we use when we we have the uh designer pay our review engineer. Well, what I'm gonna do is get a estimate from our review engineer, what it will cost to review that plan. It's not a residential plan. This is large systems. Thousands of gallons per day. When that comes back and we figure out how many site visits we're gonna have to do, then we'll come to the board and we'll set a fee. And we'll let the applicant know, this is the fee for your um project. I don't wanna be held to a number. If someone comes in and wants to do, for instance, um. We got a nursing home. They happen to have a new system. They don't need a new system, but if they did, that's a five thousand gallon a day system. That's not a three hundred gallon a day system, so they're they're apples and oranges. So that's why I'd like to do, leave that open for discussion when they come up. I'll come to the board and we'll talk it out. Uh, re-review fees. Uh, that covers the cost of our re-review plus some um, plus some office soft costs. Component step that requires, that allows at least two inspections, component replacement. I have a question mark on Title Five Inspector permit. Um, and you could probably weigh in on this. Uh, I'm not a fan of this fee. I spoke out against it when it was implemented. And the reason I'm not a fan of this um is because all Title Five inspectors are licensed through the state. Every Title Five inspector has to be certified through the through D P. So I saw no reason why we had to have a separate licensing requirement for Titan. Um. In those discussions, it was scaled back to just pay the fee. Well, in that, in that case, I don't see what the what the inspector is getting, other than just. Tightening the news on who can do inspections in town. And to me, I think from a capital perspective. Um, it it narrows the available inspectors to the people indicted, and I think that's, I think that's a hindrance. I'd like to abolish that.
Complaints about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's it? I I always default to what the other towns kinda do.
Yeah, uh, most towns don't require it. There, I can tell you, I'm in a hundred and thirty five different towns. I probably have fifteen or twenty licenses out of those. So it's very, it's it's rare that a town requires a license outside of the state requirement.
You see more the review fee for them to review the.
Right.
The inspection report, so, yeah.
Yeah, the review fee is something that we should do, or we wanna make sure that an inspector is passing in a report that. Um, protects the consumer and meets Title Five.
As well as the town's Title Five regulations too, because there are some specific ones that we have.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
So what do you think? Do away with the town having a Title Five uh fee?
Doctor fee, yeah.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my opinion.
Yeah, just have, just as long as they're current with the state.
State certified, they can do Title Fives in town. To um.
I think the review fee is low compared to other towns.
Yeah.
Our review fee, I think it is.
Well, it's not seventy five now. I went up on it.
Oh.
Yeah, it's fifty now.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, okay.
No, the review fee was fifty, it's seventy five.
Right, but it was fifty.
It was fifty.
Yeah. If you think it should be higher, that's.
I mean. I I think a hundred is pretty standard around anywhere around here, but.
Yeah, Swansea is a hundred, Berkeley's a hundred twenty five.
Pretty much gets passed off to the homeowner anyway, so.
That's, I don't, whatever, whatever you wanna do, right now.
How much time is it gonna take?
I review all the Title Five reports until uh the health agent's up to speed. Um. Yeah, I I I think.
Is the co- is the cost comparable to the amount of time that you're spending reviewing them?
At seventy five it is.
Okay.
But to your point, if I wasn't able to do them and we sent them out to a third party, it would cost a hundred dollars.
Okay.
So if you wanted to use that as a baseline, just in case they have to go off review.
Yeah, I mean, I'd agree with that.
I think that's.
If if we hit a point that you get swamped and we're sending them out, we're losing money.
Yeah, I don't wanna.
Yeah.
Oh, I, you know, and if we're getting rid of the fifty dollars, not that it's, you know, they're not paying that now, which. You know, going up another twenty five, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay. Perfect.
What's next on your? Fee schedule?
Um, yep, so the other ones are all pretty explanatory. So I wanna spend a minute, if you're okay, on stormwater animal control. I think animal control. There's a bit, I think I'm all, they just went through those fees, didn't they?
Yep.
Okay, so those are pretty recent fees, so I don't think we we would touch those.
Yeah, we reached out to states. She was a lot of.
Yeah, we had that meeting with her.
Stormwater, however, um, I I I have my opinion on stormwater. I actually don't think it belongs under the purview of the Board of Health. Um.
I don't either.
So I don't know if we wanna use the fee structure as a catalyst to determine where stormwater is gonna land in town, but I don't think it belongs with the Board of Health.
No.
I did some um background on it. State wide, the three departments that uh stormwater falls under is Public Works. Planning Departments and Conservation Commissions. Very rarely does it fall under the Board of Health. So, um, I can't speak as to why it was put under the Board of Health originally, but I'm going to probably say that. The Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen were one in the same when this was established. So I'm gonna say that the Board of Selectmen wanted some kind of control and it seemed to fit more um. Appropriately under the Board of Health at that time instead of the Board of Selectmen. Um, that doesn't mean we're gonna get that all figured out tonight in one meeting, but I wanted to use this as a way just to open up the dialogue as the long term. Plans with stormwater, I think we should talk about maybe moving it to uh outside of the Board of Health. Right now, it's a bylaw, so it would require a town meeting and, you know, it's not gonna happen tonight.
Right.
I just wanted to get a little feedback on your thoughts were as a board on it.
Uh.
So I wouldn't be recommend recommending changing any of that, especially with the fact that it might someday not be under our purview.
Right.
Um, since, I mean, obviously, since it is now, um, and it it would take a while to get it out. Um, these fees technically, which I like how you did it. You kinda put it on its own appendix type deal. Um. Is storm water, are these numbers something that storm water suggests? Or, I mean, no matter what, we're gonna have to control it for a little while.
Yeah.
So are these numbers stuff that they suggest? Do they suggest changes? Are they okay with these numbers?
These numbers were established fairly recently in the.
Okay.
It was scheme of time, uh, just a few years ago, so.
Uh, not to get off the subject, but. Did you say we're getting thrown out at six o'clock?
I, it's late.
I checked online, they start at seven.
Seven.
Okay.
I should have looked.
Yeah, no, I, I thought, I knew there was a meeting, I thought it was seven or seven thirty.
Yeah.
And I was just looking at the stuff we've gotta go through and.
Yeah.
If we get twenty minutes, we're not gonna make it.
No, it's seven.
Okay.
Unless there was an email sent down, they didn't change the website?
No, I, I give certified mail about this.
Well, no, and, oh, okay.
Well, no, in twenty minutes.
What, was it seven thirty the hearing that you got?
I think it was seven or seven thirty.
Okay, so we're good.
I don't.
Appeals seven and nine.
What is that?
The Zone of Appeals is coming in soon, isn't it?
Seventy, okay, seven o'clock, yeah.
Uh, I mean, if that's the case, I, I mean, I know that the stormwater separation is a bigger. Discussion, uh, but for now, it's gonna live under us. So, I mean, I'm okay with accepting this as a separate page kinda thing. And just leaving it as it is. I like how you did it. And we'll just go from there, but to your point, it is a bigger discussion.
Okay. Thank you. So. So I think the only thing that I don't see here, Elizabeth, that was brought up tonight, it was understood that temporary is. Months, I think, stat hardly, but I think I'd like to capture it in the fee schedule.
Okay.
Uh, it's moderation.
I did notice that the animal restructure, the stable to change. Um, residential is still twenty-five. Fee to seventy-five from fifty. You know, great.
Okay. Um, did we, is this what I said? Did we wanna put the trash bag piece in here incorporated in here? Or did we just leave, wanna leave that separate?
That's up to you. I, I don't have an issue with that. It's.
I'm just, I'm wondering where, like, if I'm signing a contract as a, a store owner, we're saying, well, the cost is set by the board. You know, I might say, well, where's that cost set? Where can I see it? So unless there's another place to see it, which I'm all for.
Yeah, there is.
If we don't have a place to set it, then should this, should trash fees? I mean, even if it went into the, the storm water line item in the, the back, just so it's there if somebody requests them. You know, you might get a store owner that says, well, I wanna see where the, they published that price.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, if we can add the, the trash bag cost into the stormwater fees, cause. Well, no, they're, they're solid waste, sorry.
Yeah, but we can, on, on, on the appendix page, to your point, we'll just put solid waste.
Okay.
And we're gonna put trash bag, large and small.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a great idea.
So do we need to make a motion on this?
Yes, um, and I would just ask that you um include in your motion the six-month expiry. The elimination of Title Five uh. Back there and the addition of the trash bag cost of fee.
Wanna make a motion, go ahead.
Um, I got it. Like, unless you.
Go ahead.
I, I was just writing notes, unless you're good, go ahead. Um.
I don't give me the one of this.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept this, um, with the changes that we discussed tonight, um. Add it with the addition of the six-month expiration to the temporary food permit. Um, the elimination of the Title Five Inspector Permit Fee. Um, the increase of the Title Five Review Fee to a hundred, um, and then the addition of the large and small trash bags to the last page. And. You can send it out for final approval, but I'll, I'll make a motion to accept it with those changes.
I second that motion.
I.
I.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And Elizabeth, thank you.
Okay, so now the grant. Okay.
You doing up?
The grant.
So, um. In your packet, there are a few items um that I'd like to discuss purchasing. As you know, that the, the revenue source for this. We, we helped the department, Board of Health. Uh, in receipt of a ten thousand dollar grant to buy a container for our mattress program. And we now have accumulated funds of in excess of fourteen thousand dollars. In our solid waste program, uh, grant monies. Uh, six of that were recently obtained, um. Mr. Muller and I applied for those funds, we were, we were um successful. Uh, just like the uh mattress container grant we applied for was successful. Um, so that now brings out funding to fourteen thousand. The ten thousand dollar grant for the roll-off is easy. That's about what a roll-off could, I'm sorry, a uh data, data costs. Currently, we leased one, so we have a monthly lease payment that we're doing on it. Uh, through this D E P funded grant, we're able to buy a forty-foot container. A single-use forty-foot container is right around ten thousand dollars. Uh, the only thing that D E P asks is that we put a sticker on it. Uh, this was funded by a grant through D E P. Um, that was the only clause or condition.
Now, if we. But could find over eight thousand.
Yeah.
Can we use two thousand somewhere else?
No. I asked that question. I, I can assure you, unless you buy something that is not single trip, you are not gonna find one for less than ninety-five hundred bucks.
Okay.
They're, they're ninety-five to ten grand for a nice quality.
Yeah.
I wouldn't wanna go any less than what we have. We have a new container.
No, no, I, I, I agree, a one-use one.
So I, I just need your permission to expend the funds. Obviously, I'll put out the bid. I'll try and get the best price possible. Uh, it'll be a single-use container, that means it came overseas once. And uh, they're like brand new. And then we'll um. Um, I'll, the one that we're leasing, I'll give the option of selectmen to take over the lease if they want. Um, cause there's a need for storage, but the Board of Health won't be paying the lease anymore. And then we'll just need to have a sticker made up to meet the condition of the, of D E P. And then the other um monies, I did check with uh Mrs. Hollenback, who's our rep from D E P. If we don't start spending money. The state is going to crown fund giving us any more. So um, some of the funds go back several years that haven't been expended upon, so I don't wanna spend money foolishly, but I came up with a couple of ideas. That are grant allowed, meaning the grant, uh, known container allows for the expenditures. Um. It's sort of, uh, the first one I wanna talk about was actually the last one in your packet. It is reusable bottle fillers. So we have one here at Old Town Hall. Uh, that is approved expenditure, and the reason is you're reusing bottles, you're not um, you know, buying through vending machines, et cetera, et cetera. There are no refillable bottle stations at Old Town Hall. Um, I believe this is part of the renovation project. They're pretty pricey, they're not inexpensive. There are two places for a bottle filling station next door, so I would be looking to buy two of these. With the installation, plumbing, electrical, et cetera, we're looking at about seven or eight grand for the two of them.
Now. When you say bottle filling stations, is that bottled water?
No, you, it, it just means you use a reusable, reusable container.
You just plop it under there.
Yeah.
It's, 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 it's infrared eye, you don't touch anything, it's, it's sanitary. You just stick the bottle there and it fills the bottle.
I know the last meeting, we had discussion with, so. The, and water department issued the warning about not gonna get water.
Right.
But we're getting the water pumped in from them.
Right.
People going, they're filling their water cups.
Right. Well, I think at that point, if the, if the Board of Health deems that the water is not suitable for drinking, we can just shut those off. That, I think that would be appropriate, but it's a good point. I think it's something we need to consider.
These are carbon filtered anyway.
They are carbon filtered, but I don't know if the carbon filters would. Correct the issue that the water park was seeing. It's a great point. Uh.
I, I think.
We need to be conscious of.
I think a lot of it would. Because. When water comes out of the plant. It should be true. Any contamination gets between the plant and machine is sediment from the pipe. And that bill probably will. Fill the head of the set.
So you mentioned um total cost for the two be around seven grand?
Including the plumbing.
What is the amount that we have in, that we have to use?
Fourteen thousand.
So about half of that then?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Um, now that I actually think about it, our, it does. I don't know if it's this. But my filter in my refrigerator filtered out whatever the. Water department put out, cause I remember looking at the box when I got home. Um, and that was literally listed on there as some rate that it filters out.
Oh, great. And those units do tell you when the filter needs changing. I do have additional filters downstairs in my office, so we do change those regularly. So, and I would have the Board of Selectmen's budget change those filters. That wouldn't be an ongoing cost through the Board of Hall. Just the grant funds to get them installed. You can see that the price for these are, you know, a little less than two thousand each. But. Plumbers are very expensive. And there is electric performance to this, so uh we'll be electrician, tell electrician, tell department to help us put them in.
Is there a maintenance schedule for those?
Uh, just for the filter.
Okay.
Right, now, one comment. Now, you're gonna call me left-handed. You shouldn't change the filters too often.
We don't.
Cause a dirty filter will filter that, I'll really clean it.
I'm changing the filter several days after the machine tells me to change.
What's that?
I'm changing the filter several days after the filter tells me to change.
Do you, do you agree, a dirty filter, it does filter more?
Filters do work very well.
Yes.
You get to a point eventually where they.
Then you can't give a slow move, right?
You feel the need for two in the same building?
I, I think because there's no elevator in that building.
Okay, that's fair.
Extramitoria.
Okay, that's fair, yeah.
We don't have.
Thank you.
We don't have an elevator.
I thought there was, but.
Good point.
All right, and then the other things, um. Is uh recyclable um benches and picnic tables are also authorized uh purchase through the grant. So I'd like the board's um. Thoughts on purchasing several benches and. And put them around town hall campus and in each park. I believe there are five parks. And have some plaques made that we can give the Board of Health and the Health Department a little recognition as to how these were obtained. And uh, you know, we can come up with whatever language you wanna put on them. Um, just to give a little uh. This is where they, this is how, this is how we got these.
Yeah, because we don't want them, we don't want the public to think that we just were not gonna use taxpayers' money to buy them.
Right. But we've also using grant funds in a way that the, the public can actually.
Right.
Use them.
So as long as the plaque says, you know, we got this through the grant.
Maybe something similar to what's going on the recycling trailer or the.
So there's, yes, but the recycling trailer is specific to mass D E P. They're taking off.
Oh, these aren't?
These are not required to do anything.
Oh, okay, okay.
I thought just it would be a good idea to not leave mass D E P out, but for the Board of Health to take a little recognition.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea too. Yeah.
Um, the final tally, I haven't, I haven't really given it much thought. Uh, I don't, certainly don't wanna expend the additional seven thousand, but these are fairly reasonably priced. I think the benches are three hundred each change a piece. And picnic tables are a little pricey, they're under a thousand bucks, so I was thinking maybe just two picnic tables on this campus, one from each building. And.
Do you have the wheelchair accessible?
We do.
Anywhere right now?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Oh, you're all. So I, I, I thought that would be a good idea, so. And, and I'm open to whatever, whatever the board feels. Uh, if you think it should be more than two, then that's fine. You think it should be one on each building and we, and we, we go with the accessible table, that's fine as well. And then the benches, I thought, you know, with the, with the clock being reasonable, in my opinion, three hundred dollars. Eleven, three, three hundred eleven. I thought that we could get several of these and scatter them around town hall campus and then at least maybe one at each um park.
Um, are we gonna save any of these for the new library?
You can.
Or. Well, are they able to be moved around? Will they be secured to the ground?
Don't know, I haven't.
Sorry, too many questions.
They actually can, they actually can be secured.
Okay.
The, the feet have flanges where it's, and I was gonna leave that up to the highway department.
Okay.
You don't need people sitting on them.
Yeah.
My guess is Mr. Ferry will probably wanna secure them.
Okay.
That's a good, that's a good question.
Is there a place at, that, that's a good thought. Was there a place at the library to put one of these picnic tables?
We haven't designed the landscape of the library yet, but if you would like to.
I just thought, you know, like a bench and a picnic table at the library would be nice to sit outside and read or something.
If you would like to make sure that we retain enough funds in the grant. To do that, we don't necessarily have to buy it now and store it. You could just make sure we have enough funds to tie it. Unless you wanna do that, I can try.
Unless there are funds already set aside for that type of landscaping for the library?
I have no idea.
Okay, okay.
It'd be nice to donate something from the Board of Health.
I think that would be nice. Yeah.
And the pickup ball courts, do you think about those? Sorry?
Oh.
Ball courts, did you think about those?
I'm working with the C P C. They're working on, um. Touching all these trails together.
Yes.
So it's also a good idea maybe to put one in the trail.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I guess there's two, there's two questions I have. Um, I don't want the state to say, sorry, you didn't spend the grant money, move it back, so that's an issue for me. The second thing is, I don't know if these prices will escalate if we wait. So, you know, maybe we ought to buy them and see if we can store them. Uh, you know, in the interim, so that, I, I know that that rail project is something that's gonna come to fruition, but it might be several years down the road. The library has a prospective opening date of early twenty twenty-five. So, you know, it's still a ways off. So I don't know if we want to buy them to make sure that we've secured our place to be able to make a donation in the future, and we'll just find a place to put them. I'm sure they're gonna come down, collapse, we have to put them together, so it's not like we're gonna have a place for all these benches to be stored.
Yeah, I, I, whatever, if, if we need to spend the money, I mean, we should spend the money if it's been there for a few years. Um. If you have an idea of where you think they should go and.
Yeah.
The cost, or do you need to put a packet together or price?
I, I was thinking, I was thinking that I could, uh, if this is something you wanna do, I could put an email together to the board members. Um, you could agree to spend the money tonight. Um, and then uh we can finalize the actual tally and what the cost will be through the email, if that, if that's okay. But I'm certainly not saying that I wanna spend it all. I believe Mrs. Marra has another idea too for some of the grant funds, so. We wanna make sure we have enough of that, but um. I think once I put my head around where they should all go, based on the feedback, I like the trail's a good idea. Uh, the library's a great idea, then we can quantify it in email and see what it'll cost.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that'd be awesome.
That's great, thank you.
And what did you say, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
I just get a lot of calls, I mean, a lot of base, but, well, which people are just no one on the website. I think sending out a mail. With our information and what they can find on the website. Doesn't have to be that specific, I just threw that together.
On this.
No. Um.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to it is the QR code, so.
But get something out there so people know, hey, the website has all this information. I have come in on Monday and it's called Friday. Like, all late in the evening Thursday, that somebody needed information on this. It's on the website.
Okay. Uh, so. We wanna send them out to everybody indicted?
Best thing, I didn't get a chance to get classes, I got it, I also thought of getting a VP involved with students.
Yeah.
So I think we get these.
Uh.
To the students.
Jim and I did have a discussion about that. Uh, I got involved with. Uh, when they sent out those flyers for BP about the. Both the school. And. It's probably gonna be about three thousand dollars, but. I think that's what it costs them to send out eight and a half by elevens. You know, we don't have to go that big. But. You know, we don't have to go that big, but there's two ways of doing it. You can hire a company that will print them and get them out to everybody. Or we can do it ourselves, if we do it ourselves, we have to pick. Every route of the post office, so South Dayton Post Office has seven routes, they'll tell us route one has six hundred customers. Route two has nine hundred, and route three, and then we have to put them in. Packages of that many. And label them, this is for route one, this is for route two, and then when the mail person comes in, they put that by their seat. And they go on route one, they know, just put one in every box.
So we don't have to specify an address and name an address?
No, ju- just the fact that that particular mail route serves six hundred people. We gotta give them a pile of six hundred to go do that route. And each post office has like seven different routes. What's that?
How do they charge you that?
Uh, it's a bulk fee, I, I don't remember the, exactly the fee, it is cheaper than, I believe, than having another company do it. Uh, I think time wise and money wise, we can check the BP. I'm not so sure that BP will be the cheapest, because. Companies that are really big into mass produce and these, they buy their paper truckloads at a time. BP, we order from them, they go especially a lot of the, the material that we need, and only buying a little bit, so they're gonna pay more money. And we're gonna pay that cost, and they're gonna pay for ink, we're gonna pay that cost. We might even have the power to pay some type of a fee for wear and tear on the equipment, I don't know. I don't know how it works, and I don't know how.
Yeah, I mean, if we get a quote for it, I'm all for it, um I mean, if it's in the ballpark, I honestly, it, it's grant money, it's not tax money and.
Off the top of my head, I would say you're probably looking at three thousand dollars.
It's a good project for BP, it's a good support of our community high school, it's, I, I. Unless they're five thousand dollars more, if they're within a couple hundred dollars, I, I mean, we're using. Like I said, we're not using taxpayer based money, we're using grant money.
I can call tomorrow.
And it's good to rope in our local community high school and give the kids a project to do if they have the availability to do it. I mean, if we can get prices, I'm all for it.
I'll get prices, you know, I'll do.
I actually do, I, I agree with Paul, the QR code would be nice.
Yeah.
My daughter's.
Paul and I usually don't agree on technology, but.
QR code added.
And then we could pay credit to um BP if that's who we're using.
Yeah.
That they, that it came from them, right, from the students and I.
Yeah, I mean, let's get a couple quotes, we'll talk about it, but, I mean, like I said, if they're within.
Picture somebody that's on the internet, cause.
For, if we're.
I don't want to get in trouble for using somebody else's.
I think it's a great idea.
If we're in a little bit of cost then.
That's my picture. Get in trouble. And the images on the back come from Waste Zero and it's shareable materials that they advertise.
Great job.
They actually gave me that to share. So I'll look into costs and see how you guys price it. They can just resolve a lot of the Facebook talk and calls and. A lot of stuff on there, oh, I didn't know.
So can I go back to the water fountain, Jim?
Sure.
What are we looking at for a timeframe if we order those for completion?
Um. I would say probably six weeks.
Okay.
I actually buy these locally.
Yeah.
Yeah, the uh. Um, they're right through Home Depot.
Okay.
They, I, I priced it out when I did these, they were pretty cheap. I think, I think I waited three and a half weeks for them to be delivered, and then I would say another two or three weeks to install. And it's not like we need all the infrastructure to be put in, there were bubblers at town hall previously, but obviously we'll see if we can get it to fit.
Right.
These.
True.
Okay, so. Is that it for the grant?
Can we make a motion on the water fountains at least, I, I think that's a good.
Yes.
I think I'd like to make a motion to move forward with those.
Okay, and then I, and then I have a comment on the, on another motion I have, yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to move forward with purchasing the two water fountains with the refillable water bottle stations for town.
Yeah.
Recommended.
The grant.
Yep, so we can start it right away.
I second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And this is entirely up to you. You could make a motion on the picnic table and the benches, however. You could specify in the motion where you would like them to go, and then we can finalize the count through, through an email, if that works. Unless you want to bring it up at another meeting.
I, and I'd have to think about where we would put them.
Yeah, I, I'd like to look at the location options that we have, maybe, and, and the popularity of those locations, who's gonna be using them.
And one of the thoughts that I had when talking about the trails. That's a bad place to have vandalism. You know what I mean, if they're out here, I'm not worried about it being vandalized, but if they're out there on the trails, your kids out there partying, who knows what's gonna happen to them. You know?
I mean, I wanna, I, to your point, I wanted to spend the money, um at least the, the water bubblers are a step forward, so it looks like we're using it.
Yeah, I agree, and I'm not trying to.
The middle of the summer, this park was packed and there's not enough seating, so.
Yeah, no.
First one's the worst, you put two or three, yeah, they'll get used.
Alright, yeah.
Okay, maybe I'll just send an email where we summarize some of the places that we talked about tonight, and then individually, you can just go take a look around and. And see where, and then, and then maybe we'll put on the next agenda, uh probably January's meeting at this point.
I mean, what were your thoughts on, did you have thoughts on like exactly where they wanted to go?
Uh, no, I wish I did.
And do we have a cutoff time, but we're gonna lose that money?
No, but she just cost, I'm gonna start spending it.
Right, yeah.
I just wanted to heat her morning.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, no, we can move forward with the.
If you think it, if you think it can wait till January and we can get some places nailed down, then let's do it, if you think that it's gonna go before January, then we can vote on something tonight.
Wait, is our January meeting fit uh in the schedule, is that when I return from vacation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we not have a December meeting?
I, well, we would discuss that, but most, most committees don't.
But, oh, that's even better. We had one last year, it was my first meeting. Memory.
Uh, anything else on the grant?
So, Jim?
I'm sorry?
Are you back on the sixteen?
No.
No, we're not here. It's a current Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Fine, yeah.
Okay, I'll be.
Probably should make a decision and then.
Or if you want to have a December meeting, I'm here until Christmas, so.
Well, why, why are we gonna have a December meeting anyways?
I have no, I mean, if, if nobody else objects, I'd just as soon get this over with at the next meeting and.
Yeah.
Be done by the end of the year.
I'd rather, yeah, I'd rather do it.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, excellent.
Okay. Uh, anything else on the?
Does that work, Patrick, have a December meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just assumed that we were gonna have a meeting on December anyways.
Yeah, I, that's fine, I just can see where it landed, but when they get close to the holidays, sometimes committees. So we'd have a meeting the week of the twentieth then.
Yeah, that's one I think I was actually gonna ask you to, on the week of the twentieth, um if we could move it away from Tuesday, could we do Wednesday?
We could, we're here uh Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, half a day Thursday that week.
I don't have a problem.
Probably Wednesday, the twentieth.
What time, you guys close at five, right?
Five thirty.
We want to do it after five thirty or?
No, uh there's coverage in the office, so.
So you could, you wanna keep it at four thirty and?
Or we could do Monday, um actually, no, Mondays are worse for me, yeah, could we do something Wednesday, is that okay?
Wednesday, the twentieth?
Yeah.
I would recommend keeping it at four thirty because I can't flex time. If we go all.
Alright, alright, okay, yeah, uh whatever you guys suggest is fine with me.
Yeah, that'll be a quick.
What, thirty seven?
Yeah. Perfect.
Would it make it easier for, on your schedule for us to start on Wednesdays instead of Tuesdays?
No, Tuesdays are fine, I'm remote now on Tuesdays, so I'm home, but I have a training that day from two to five.
Okay.
So that's the only reason I was gonna ask to move it.
Okay, I'll still send that email out so that we, um, take a look at the locations and we'll try to nail, nail down how many.
Yeah, and then we'll just not have anything in January since you're away most of the month and.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
Must be nice.
Okay, so we're all ready, guys?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so now, next, the point a board member, uh the Solid Waste Committee. Administrator Mullin had asked that he, requested he would like to see one of us members be on the Solid Waste Committee. Anybody want to volunteer?
I'd take it.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joanne to the Board of Health, not the Board of Health, um the Solid Waste Committee.
Okay. And.
And I'm gonna step down from the vote.
Okay, I'll step down as chairman and I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye, all favor. You are now.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And now we.
Here are those cupcakes.
Wait a second.
Alright, now, uh next, we get a review discussing that point. But, the point, Health Agent Heather, excuse me, I can't pronounce her last name. Was it?
Bernard.
Bernard, okay, to the Solid Waste Committee. Any discussion?
I'd make a motion to appoint Health Agent Heather Bernard to the Solid Waste Committee.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's do that one.
The cupcake maker?
Yeah.
Oh.
We thought it was automatic, because she uh was a health agent that stepped into that role with your form, now she needed to be on it, so.
All right, Jim, did you put this on the tracking system for the Title V inspections?
Yeah, so this was brought up last. That um we come up with a database that tracks um alternative systems. And uh Title V inspections, and two reasons for that, and I don't want to speak for you. One is that alternative systems require ongoing maintenance and annual contracts, and two, Title V inspections. Um if there are failure or conditional pass requires some type of uh an upgrade or replacement, so.
Within a timeframe.
Within a timeframe, yeah, Title V dictates the timeframes for both of those. Uh and the frequency, so um I thought it was a great idea, it was a great suggestion. Um I talked with Office Manager Marra, she thinks it's a pretty easy thing for us to put a database together. So we just wanna um have a formal vote by the board to establish that, and then that's something that the office.
Did we have one already in the works?
We have a list of inspections, but we don't send out notifications saying. This is how much time you have left or.
Right, this is gonna be a more involved database where. The uh, the way that'll be set up, there'll be reminders that will be sent to us so that we don't have to say. This property on this is, is, you know, the two year expiry is coming up, the computer's gonna do it for us. I can tell you that most of the time, except for the IAs, because they're fairly new in this town, we don't have a lot of them. Um, the failed inspections, I typically get a call, request for a perk test within a week after the, the failed report comes in, so people are pretty proactive. However, we want to make sure that everyone's following the rules, this is the system.
And there are some instances where people are given a certain timeframe to complete something and then.
Right.
It needs to be followed upon and.
Right, so correct me if I'm wrong, Elizabeth, uh we can set up that database, we can set up reminders and we can. Um, we cannot worry about it and let the computer tell us when the expiration dates come up. Okay.
That's good.
That's what we want to do, and we want to make that part of our daily processes. When the Type of Five report gets reviewed, it will go to the Office Manager, if it's a failure or conditional pass, we'll automatically put it to that, did you want to track passes as well? Or?
I mean, their passes, I mean, I think they should be all tracked, everything maybe.
But they'll, they won't need a reminder though.
No, right, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so yeah, so that, that will be captured when the review is done, and then when an IA technology comes in, more than likely this one will be involved. And then that will go into the system, and once the compliance certificate is issued, that will be the trigger. Because they'll need to be on an annual maintenance contract one year thereafter, and the COC requires a contract with the installation company. To follow twelve months after installation, but after that, the, the resident is responsible to hire a company to maintain that. What Mrs. Wilson's trying to do is make sure that the Board of Health ensures that property owners do what they're supposed to.
Right, and if there's a transfer, we also need to make sure that the new owners are aware that they also have to sign a contract, and that's, I believe, is in the deed restriction, okay, yeah.
So as long as their attorney does their job, it's, it's recorded with the registry.
And we would know that on our database as well.
So it's a great idea, just something we need to add to uh the list, and I believe um Office Manager has the know-how to do all that. And make it sit really simple, so.
So this is just everything coming in and going forward?
Right, yeah, we're not, not going back in time, the only thing that I will say is the IAs, that's something I may have to go back and look at.
There's not many.
There's not many, but, right.
So are you tracking the previous conditional passes or?
We, we have it.
There hasn't been a way to go back?
System in place for that previously, no, I can tell you that I've done it internally myself, cause I'm reviewing all the reports since earlier this year. It's not verified in a, it is data sheets here, but, but I have made sure that everybody's doing the D boxes and all that stuff, yeah, but it's a great idea with the way you want it, yes.
My concern is the ones in the past that are on a temporary fix that. It could be detrimental to the environment if they're not, if we don't look back and say, oh, well, three years ago, this guy was only given a six month.
Right.
Temporary, and now it's been three years and.
Yeah, we, I, I, I don't know how we would go back in time prior to when I was reviewing the reports, I, I think that would just be. An absorbent amount of work, and I don't know what we would uncover, the people at IndiIn for the most part, I will say, are pretty proactive and doing the right thing. At least that's my experience, but I think moving forward from here on out, it's a great way for us to clarify.
So, yeah. And thank you for the extra work, Elizabeth.
We don't have anything on the agenda for unexpected business.
Okay.
Is something that we can add?
No, it's, it's, what are you talking about, tracking system?
No, usually we have on the agenda.
Items not listed in reasonable.
Oh, why, do you have one?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I don't know, can we talk about it?
I don't know, I, I, I don't know the proper procedure, that we can and we can't.
Yeah, I don't know. Um.
I mean, technically, you could step down and talk about it as public input.
That's, that's, I'm thinking that maybe.
Well.
Appropriate way to do it.
I really don't want to do that.
Okay.
Other than that, I wouldn't know the, the proper way, other than that.
Uh, why don't?
Because, yeah, that would be the next, the only other option to talk about something would be at the public input, right here on number six.
Right, but I don't want it to be public, so uh.
I mean, it's gonna be public anyways.
It would be you as a citizen rather than as the chairman, talking about something that Patrick and I might have to motion on.
Right, but. Can we go into an executive session?
No, no.
That's gonna be posted.
We can in the next meeting.
Okay. Then I'm gonna leave it with something that uh we'll get further.
Okay.
We'll get further uh input on it.
Okay.
Okay, uh any public input?
Everybody on Zoom? Our ratings are going down, huh?
We do have the number one hint for our website, right?
We do, we do, can you believe that?
I don't say.
Alphabell has the number one, that's crazy.
How can you know? Look at us.
Is that picture page?
It's the fat holiday schedule. People want to know if the trash is getting skipped this week.
That's true.
That's something I could just go to Facebook. It seems always good.
Okay, uh. The approval of the minutes for the October seventeenth meeting?
We'll approve the meetings, the regular meeting minutes from October seventeenth, twenty twenty three.
You have them in front of you?
I don't have them.
Yeah, I don't have them either.
I think they got emailed out anyways and I read them.
I didn't know, I'm just one.
Put these out.
Yeah, they were in the packet, oh, you couldn't open the packet?
Didn't open the packet.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Sorry, Paul.
While they're reading these, can we maybe have a conversation? Maybe we figure out a solution.
No. That's fine, I.
These look very good, Elizabeth. Very complete, Tim.
Probably just because it was a huge file.
I think so.
They were needed separately.
Yeah, that's all right.
What it went through, she got in her.
It did say it wouldn't download to my S D card, which I have like a giant one anyway, so I never had that issue, but I think it was just the size.
Yeah, it was, it was two megabytes.
No, they look very good. Um Elizabeth, on the signatures that we did, um I inadvertently signed one that I wasn't supposed to sign, so you'll have to redo that one.
Okay, the one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just crossed out my signature, so you'll see it.
Okay.
Good one.
This is the recommendation letters that you guys just approved, so that's the top one, you don't want to go for cupcakes?
I know, geez, she held it out on me.
She waited till last.
She, she literally waited till the vote went through. It's all right, cupcakes aren't good, anyways.
Damn, it's too much like frosting on top of them and.
You gotta break them, you tried that, oh my god, it's life changing.
Oh, they're trying to eat on outside.
They come in.
So.
It is cold.
I've been.
Do you want to make your motion again?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes from the regular meeting, October seventeenth, twenty twenty three.
I second the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Harry's? I'm motion to adjourn.
Uh make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Aye.
Aye.
So, we're done.
Thank you.
It is. Yes, also known as.